Board member Williams. Board member Otte. Board member Porter. Board chair Coleman.
President.
You have six in the affirmative.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Tonight, our honors are in honor of India Fowler, Executive Assistant to Chief of Business Operations, and Jacqueline McBride, Grant Physical Manager, Business Operations. Please keep their family and loved ones and your thoughts and prayers.
I'd also like to add Dr. Rick Potts, who was a longtime educator both here in Memphis Shelby County Schools as well as CBU.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. We're now on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments? Interim Superintendent Richmond?
No amendments.
Board members? There being no amendments to the agenda, is there a motion for the approval of the agenda in a second? Sir, move. Motion by Board Member McKissick, second by Board Member Williams. Roll call vote, please.
Board member McKissick?
Aye.
Board member Garcia?
Aye.
Board member Porter?
Aye.
Board member Otte?
Aye.
Board member Williams? Board chair Coleman?
Aye.
You have six in the affirmative.
Thank you. We're now on to the superintendent's report. Interim Superintendent Richmond?
Yes, board chair and other board members, as part of my superintendent's report, I'd like to share with you our most recent TCAP results and provide an overview of our academic plan. Mr. Bill White from Research Evaluation and Accountability and Data Strategies Department will lead the TCAP presentation, and Ms. Alicia Kiner, our Deputy Chief Academic Officer, will follow with additional information on the academic plan at a very, very high level. Please note that what we're about to see in this particular presentation reflects the unwavering commitment, strength, and resilience of our schools, teachers, and leaders. We couldn't have done this work without them. These TCAP scores are more than numbers. For us, they tell a story of educators who went above and beyond, students who persevered through challenges, and a community that rallied together to support their success. Tonight, we honor their hard work and celebrate growth that we've made while staying focused on the hard work ahead. So at this time, Mr. White, would you present our TCAP data?
Thank you, Dr. Richmond. Good evening, board members. If you just take a look at our first slide here, one of the things to recognize about the data that I'm presenting is that this is just one piece of the puzzle, and quite frankly, it's not even a complete piece. And what I mean by that is, the Tennessee Department of Education tends to put out the data that are used for accountability purposes in phases. And what has been shared publicly thus far are some of our raw TCAP results. And when I say raw, what I mean by that is, they have not applied all of the accountability rules that they use to refine the numbers based on some business rules they have for that. So, for example, these data do not include the test scores for our students who have disabilities and take our alternate assessments. So those have to be added in. One thing that the state also does, out of fairness, is they don't include students who have not been with us for 50% of the year or more. These data, I believe they did make some adjustments related to our English learner students. One of the accountability rules is that for those English learner students who are still new to the country, they will exclude some of their test scores. So there's adjustments that get made along the way, and as they release these data in phases, sometimes they haven't applied all those accountability rules. And what I hope we'll do at a future meeting sometime is go more in-depth about the accountability models, but that's not the intent of tonight's presentation. Tonight's presentation is primarily about what is it that we have received thus far. But this table does show you, from a subject area standpoint, the subject areas that get used in the state model versus the federal model. And when you look at the federal accountability model, you'll basically see it's primarily or solely English Language Arts and Math, but then the state accountability model is the one where science and social studies also get included. And just to kind of, at a very high level, talk about those models, the federal accountability model is the one where people are used to us hearing about the priority list. Who are the priority schools? That's based on the federal accountability model. The state letter grades is the thing that most people think about when they think about the state accountability model. And I'll talk a little bit about the timeline on those at the end of this presentation. But what you can see from this slide that I'm showing here is that in all four subject areas, ELA, math, science, and social studies, where ELA is your yellow line, your math is your orange line, science is green, social studies is a bluish line, that we have seen over the past four years fairly steady growth in those subject areas. Math showed the largest growth over that time period of 2022 to 2025 by 8.4 percentage points, science by 7.5 percentage points, ELA rose steadily with 3.2 points overall, social studies up by 4.4 during that time period. And again, overall, all subjects improved over the four years. And these represent our proficiency rates, so meaning the students, the percent of students that scored proficient. When we look at it by subject area and by grade band, you'll see that for ELA, for example, in grades three through five, so our elementary students who participate in state testing, from, this is just looking at 2024 compared to the most current 2025, they went up by 2.3 percentage points from 26.8 to 29.1. In six through eight, we had a slight increase of .3 points from 17.6 to 17.9. And in nine through 12, unfortunately, there was a modest decrease of about .6 points. But when you add up all the grades together overall, we do get the three through 12 improvement of .9 from 23.7 to 24.6. And the following slides for math, science, and social studies, they're set up the same way with the various grade bands and then the overall. And in math, in elementary, three through five, we saw a 2.6 percentage point increase. In six through eight, 2.4. In nine through 12, 2.5. And overall, we went from 18.7 to 21.2. Science, again, the same structure for this slide, where in elementary, there was a .7, slight increase there. In six through eight, 1.6. In nine through 12, a .2 increase. And overall, the 25.7 to 26.7 was a 1-point increase in those proficiency levels. Social studies, the only difference here is that in social studies, there is not an elementary assessment for social studies, so you won't see that grades three through five grade band. But for six through eight, there's the 2.1 percentage point increase, and then at high school, just a small decrease there of .2. And then, again, all grade levels together, you do get that improvement of 1.8. You can look at this also at the course level, and of course, there are lots of different ways to slice and dice the data. But going by courses, so when we talk about high school math, for example, that's comprised of the end-of-course assessments in Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. And then the science assessment in high school, there's just one, it's Biology. Then you'll have your ELA grades three through eight. In high school, for ELA, you get English I and English II. For math, there's the elementary and middle school assessment, and also there's science in elementary, middle. Social studies, you have the six through eight, but then in high school, you just have that one assessment to represent high school, which is your U.S. History. And if you look at those changes from 24 to 25, you'll see that in the majority of those, by course level or type of course, you'll see that positive noted by the green, but the red does show the declines in English I, a small decline in English II, and an even smaller decline in U.S. History. Just to show you in terms of the TESA goals, now note, under 2025, I've underlined preliminary because these proficiency rates are going to change once they apply those accountability rules. So these are not the real data that are used for TESA goals or for any accountability measure, but it gives you a starting point of some sense of where we are. So the 2026 goal, so the school year we're coming into, based on those TESA goals that were shared with the board, I don't even remember when that was at this point, but hopefully you'll recall that we did talk about those, you'll see the gap. And Dr. Richmond has consistently talked about a 5 to 10 percentage point increase that is needed, and you'll see it falls in that range for each of the subject areas. So for grade three, to meet that TESA goal, we would need a 7.8 percentage point increase, for example. So just to give you a timeline here of some upcoming releases, the August 15th was, is a little confusing, and this is our best interpretation because we had received a lot of communication that said, when those district and state results were released, of what I just showed you on those percentages of proficiency, that the school-level results were also going to be released. Well, when they did that release, they told us, after asking that day, that they were going to hold off on the school level until August 15th. So I'm still a little questioning that date just a little bit, but that's the most current information we have. So all of these dates are the dates they've shared, but I do caution that sometimes things change. August 28th is our understanding of when some Tvos data will be publicly released. Now, you'll see there's a huge gap until we get to the point where we're going to get those federal designations and the state, the rest of the state report card data and the state school letter grades. November 21st is when we're expected to get, and just forgive me for using what people commonly call "the list." People talk about "the list," meaning the priority list. And that will come out on November 21st, according to this timeline. Remember, that's part of federal accountability. But then, we don't even have a date in December. We're just told that sometime in December, we will get the rest of the state report card, and we will get those school letter grades. I will say, for the past couple of years, those school letter grades have tended to come out just right before the winter break. So I'm kind of anticipating that it will be similar to that this year. And that concludes my part. You may have some questions or some follow-up, but I will say that Ms. Kiner, as you heard, is going to follow up with, so we have these data, now what's our plan? So that's the part that she will proceed with, unless you have any questions about anything that I can help with at this point.
Board member Hewitt Garcia?
Thank you. My question is, have we, the data was the last four years, where are we at compared to pre-pandemic levels? I know people have asked, like, we know that there was learning loss. Are we currently in every category above where we were at prior to COVID, or are we still recovering?
You know, it's a great question, and I am hesitant to speak definitively, not having looked at that recently, but we can go back and look. My memory is that we've pretty well recovered, but I don't want to sound too definitive about, you know, the percentages without taking a more careful look.
Yeah, I'd love to see that. And then, I'm not sure if this question is, this may be an academic question, but it seems that the third through fifth grade ELA was pretty significant in terms of an increase. To what do we attribute this to? Do we have programmatic data that you can say there is a correlation between them?
Yeah, I mean, my hope is that some of the academic colleagues here can help with that as we move into the academic presentation. But I know that we had, you know, we had concerted efforts with SEAs and tutoring, and we saw some results there. There may be some things that I'm honestly not thinking about right now that my colleagues can weigh in on.
And then I, yes, Dr. Richmond?
Yes, board member Garcia, I think Mr. White is absolutely right. When we look at where we've made the investments, I think we are seeing the yield of that investment in our pre-K through three continuum, when we see where we've improved in grades three, four, and five. The team and I have talked about, again, we know in middle school, we really got to take a hard look at middle school overall. It looks like we made some moderate gains in middle school, but nowhere where we need to be. And when we look at English I and II, we look at, first of all, do we have a highly effective teacher in those grades? We know this past year, we didn't have the support of tutoring in the way that we've had in those grades before, when you think about English I and English II. And so going forward, we want to be more deliberate in providing the supports and things that we need in those grades as well. And I think we'll see the same improvement. We didn't have a formative assessment in high school, so we weren't able to track where those students were throughout the school year. So starting day one, having those materials and resources in place, we think we're going to see the impact that we would all be proud of next school year.
And hopefully, a snowball effect, when you invest in literacy for KV3, they become middle schoolers more proficient, and that builds on it. My last question was, what do the designations mean for schools? And this is for the listening public, if they are CSI, a priority school, what are the implications for funding? What, how should, if I'm a parent of a student who gets a designation, and we can save this when that list comes out, but I just want it to be, I want it to put in the public domain, what does that mean?
Yeah, it would be the bottom 5%, bottom 5% where there would be turnaround action grants and seed grants available, as you all will see even tonight. Those additional dollars and grants have always gone to our bottom 5% schools. As you all know, I've asked Dr. Fox to head up our I-zone. We'll be bringing back our I-zone, and we'll be using some of those best practices that we've used over the years to move those students. But the other thing that I want the listening public, I charge my team, we want to do a better job of educating the listening public around TCAP and high-stakes testing and assessment. The one thing I want everyone to look at is, we do not get the full picture until halfway through the school year. My colleague that just joined our team, our chief of staff, comes from Mississippi. I asked him today in cabinet, when do you all know your letter grade? And he told me, in August. In Mississippi, they know in August what their letter grade is. They have all of their data back in August to make real-time decisions around curriculum and instruction. They implemented letter grades, I want to say maybe about seven or eight years ago, maybe two or three years before we started to. But there's no reason that we should be receiving data back in December and being asked to make real-time decisions. There's no reason for us to even be really talking about the data. I wanted to present the data because I don't want my team and I to seem as though we're running from the data and we're not owning the data. But in order for us to really make the decisions that need to be made around instruction, we need the data in real time and not piecemeal. I also don't want to be speaking to the data, and we not have all of it where we can discuss it in a meaningful way and with fidelity, even though I know people are talking about it like we have the full, complete picture, when we don't. If you listen to Mr. White, the school data, school-level data, is really still embargoed. Am I right, Mr. White?
That's correct, Dr. Richmond.
Which means if that data is still embargoed, what it says is, there's something about that data that's not complete. But yet, you've sent us district-level data, and we're expected to defend that data. We're expected to look at that data as the gospel. We're expected to have to explain to the public why our students aren't achieving at certain proficiency levels. And I think it's difficult for us to do that when we don't have the full, complete picture. And so again, I want the broader public to know that, again, this picture isn't, is not even fully complete. And it's not complete until we're halfway through the next school year.
I commend you for the transparency. We should share what we know when we know it, and that way, and we're saying exactly what's happening. So I think that that is the best that we can do to make decisions with data. I will say, just as a plug, if you have a child in the district, though, the TCAP Parent Portal actually has all of the results, and you can see your students meets expectations and the categories which they need to work on. You better believe I printed my babies on what we're going to work on this year. So at the home level, you do have access to some detailed data, so it's not too early to start weaving that into the things that you do at home. So TCAP Parent Portal, you can see all the results for your students' TCAP.
Thank you, board member Hewitt Garcia, for that plug, because that is important for our parents to be reminded of. And I just want to add to what Dr. Richmond is saying that, under his tenure as interim superintendent, our plan is to share what we have when we have it.
Board member Williams?
Because I'm seeing here, numbers and letters that I don't know what they mean. I don't know who is doing well and who's not doing well. And the ultimate thing that I would really like to know is, how much does our curriculum impact what the students are doing on the test? Are we teaching these skills in a way that they are making gains or learning something, or some of them being omitted? And I've been going back, a long, long time ago, when I was in curriculum, we followed what was on the test, and that's what we taught. And the students did fine. And I'm not sure if they're being exposed to what they're being tested on, if what they are getting in this curriculum that we are using is sufficient enough to do well on this test today, as it was in past years.
Yes, sir. Thank you, board member Williams. In terms of the first part of your question, our schools do have access to a lot of these data, though, that they are embargoed, all the way down to the teacher level and the student level. So they are, even though they've been asked to protect the data because of the embargo, they are working with their teams, including their teachers, to look at those data at the classroom level, at the student level. And then, as board member Hewitt Garcia said, parents themselves, through that portal, can go ahead and see how their child's doing. And it gets pretty specific about the standards that they were successful, and then those that they need some support. In terms of the alignment with the curriculum, I mean, certainly, my academic colleagues, again, can expand upon this, but everything that we try to do, we try to make sure aligns with state standards, whether it's curriculum materials or assessment materials, such that it can mirror as much as possible state expectations and match what they're going to be tested on. One of the things, too, that I know that Dr. Richmond wants to help educate people on is, not only has the curriculum changed over the years, but testing has changed over the years. And a lot of the expectations, as compared to years ago, about what is considered to be proficient, is much higher.
What voice, then, does the teacher have? Are they exposed to, are they, because I'm hearing from teachers, that they are not given the concepts and the things that they're testing the students over. It is not complemented in the curriculum. They're teaching, but in the sub-lab, it's not actually what this test consists of. And if they believe that, and they're teaching it, I mean, it's working probably to their disservice. My concern is, are teachers involved enough in the process of what the students are going to be tested over so they can teach it? Because it is unfair to test students over what they are not exposed to. If it's not in the curriculum, they can find a way to teach it. If they know that they have to know certain things, they can teach it. But if they don't know, and it's not in the curriculum, and they are not taught, then the students are being tested over materials that they've never seen.
Yes, thank you for that, board member Williams. As Ms. Kiner comes and presents, she's going to present at a high level on our academic plan. What she's going to share is all of the stakeholders that we've asked to weigh in on our academic plan, along with doing some of the things that you're suggesting around lesson plans, having teachers to weigh in on lesson plans, having teachers to weigh in on the assessments. She's going to touch on all of that as we move through, again, board members, at a high level, our academic plan. And what we're going to do is, as we move into the school year, at our committee meetings and work sessions, we'll bring you parts of our academic plan each month, so that you all will see where we are with the plan. It'll be a high level tonight, and then we'll post the draft plan. We'll send the draft plan to you all, so you'll be able to see our academic plan in totality, which will continue to refine as we go. But I wanted Ms. Kiner, tonight, to give you all a high-level perspective and view of what we're doing with our academic plan. So Ms. Kiner?
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Richmond, board chair, and members of the board. Tonight, I do have the honor of presenting an overview of our academic plan. And this plan is designed to bring clarity and coherence and excellence to every school, every classroom, and every student. Starting here, this plan is grounded in what we call the instructional core. That's the relationship between students, teachers, and content. Here's our theory of action. If we align instruction to high-quality content, if we build teacher and leader capacity, and we ensure that all students, especially those furthest from opportunity, consistently access rigorous, engaging learning environments, that went too fast, there we go, then students' outcomes will rise. But we know that the core doesn't strengthen itself. That's why we've added this fourth driver of leadership. That's to reinforce, develop, and sustain that core across every school. Like, Dr. Richmond, did you say the like? Did you say that? Oh, okay. Sorry. All right. So what drives our plan? This drives our plan as well, the pathway to greatness. And Dr. Richmond has spoken about this before. It moves us from a fragmented effort to a coherent system. This is not about, like, isolated initiatives. It's about aligning every department, every resource, and every instructional decision to what matters most, and that student achievement. This goes to what Dr. Richmond was just speaking about. Who informed this plan? Many of you already know that we received a report or feedback from the Council of Great City Schools at the end of last year. We read their report thoroughly, and we took all of their suggestions to heart. Then, we listened to the student voice, over 100,000 of them that were expressed on the Panorama survey. We allowed We allowed 100% of the principals, some of them in two or three ways, to participate in this. The Leadership Institute, we created focus groups and there were surveys. There were over 3,000 teachers who were involved in either a survey or a focus group. Well, all of them had the opportunity to participate in the survey. And then there were some focus groups. About 1,500 families were surveyed and we had focus groups with them as well. And then we have what we call AOTI every week, and there are about 50 district leaders who are in that space. We work together to disseminate data and feedback from our surveys and our focus groups. We also spoke with both union leaders about this plan. Bill already showed you what the TESA goals were, and we're just starting with 2026 and we're just reinforcing it in this segment here. We know that eventually, we want to get to the 52% on ELA grade two. But I want to draw your attention to on-time graduation rate and ACT composite. I do want you to know that these goals are bold. Nationally, only about 29% of students score at or above 21 on ACT. What we are aiming for is 35%. Also, there is not necessarily a TESA goal for graduation rate, so we've set our own graduation rate for 95%. There are five academic priorities that drive this plan. First is foundational literacy, high-quality curriculum, tiered interventions through MTSS and for all stakeholders, college and career readiness, job embedded PD, and leadership coaching. All of these academic priorities surfaced as a result of the data mining process that also includes stakeholder voice. Foundational literacy. By third grade, isn't just a benchmark, it's a lifeline, and I think we all know that. That's why we have protected a 45-minute foundational skills block and a 90-minute daily literacy block in elementary school. And we've grounded everything in the science of reading. The science of reading is a body of research that explains how the brain learns to read. It's not automatic. It must be taught with intention. We have to make sure students have phonemic awareness. That's how sounds work. Phonics, how letters and sounds connect, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. To bring this to life, we've even enlisted educators we have in our district who are certified in letters to help us develop our elementary school lesson plans, ensuring that they are research-based, developmentally appropriate, and classroom-ready. This is how we prevent gaps before they open. We give every child the tools to become confident. High-quality curriculum, great teaching demands great tools. We have adopted rigorous, standard-aligned materials like wonders, envision, my perspective. But materials alone are not enough. We've also, and this is something we're very proud of, worked to create lesson plans for teachers where we, and we're going to, where we have taken the test, the standards from the test, playing backwards to ensure that every teacher can align the standards with the work that they do. There is also a place for embedded weekly instructional prep and aligned feedback cycles to support excellence in delivery. Curriculum fidelity is not about control, and I think this is very important. It's about equity. And every child deserves grade-level instruction, no matter the school, no matter the classroom, no matter the zip code. Tiered intervention is how we move from reaction to prevention. I did mention, and we all know that there is a system of MTSS where we have RTI-A, RTI-B, and we have tutoring. We have all kinds of things for intervention. We've also, this year, though, developed intervention systems for the teachers, the principals, and the schools because everybody deserves a scaffold. This is not punitive. It's very intentional. And it only tells us what level of support we will give people. This is not a designation. It's not a score. It's not a, you know, whatever. But depending on where you fall, you may receive once a week support. You may receive once every two weeks. You may receive once a month. Or you may even be on a consulting basis. We have four tiers. Tier one, that's, those are the people who are knocking it out of the park. They get a consultant, right? And those principals get a consultant principal coach. But if you're at a level two, you may need once a month. Level three, that's twice a month. And level four, that's weekly. Twice, once every two weeks is level three. And then, level four, I'm sorry, is weekly. And so that includes the academic coordinators who go in to support teachers. So if that teacher falls in that tier, that's all it means. It doesn't mean you're going to get that score or that's the level teacher you are. It only speaks to the amount of support you get. College and career readiness. I do know that in August, the CCTE program or the CCTE director will be speaking and explaining to you our complete program guide that we're going to follow this year based on data, this whole data gathering in August. But graduation, this is important, is no longer the end goal. Readiness is. We're expanding our ACT prep, dual enrollment. You've seen that through the MOUs that you've agreed to already, and the CCTE program expansion. Job embedded PD and leadership coaching. Great systems grow great people. From expectations to tools to PD. What we promised principals this year is that anything they were going to have to implement in schools, they would get it this summer. We are excited that we were able to honor their commitment. And I think principals are equally excited because we are ready, they are ready, for day one. When you see job embedded PD and leadership coaching, you'll see these are the things that we're going to do. One thing that I do want to point out is while these lists look long, these are not new practices. We are ensuring that we practice or implement with extreme fidelity. It's going to be the systems that we use to follow up. This plan, once again, is moving us from fragmentation to coherence. We're going to have one accountability system, one coaching model, one walkthrough tool, and one definition of tier one. This is our new vision for excellence. It's actually about 180 pages long, so I gave you a really, really, really high view instead of reading 180 pages. And we will share the whole plan with you in totality.
Thank you, Ms. Kiner. So, board members, we wanted to bring that, as you all know, back in February, first of March, we had our initial retreat. And one of the deliverables was the academic plan. So again, in being in line with that expectation, I wanted Ms. Kiner to bring at a high level the academic plan. But we're also prepared, as early as tomorrow, to send you all a draft of that plan. The second plan was the facilities plan, and we'll be meeting on the 13th of August with the ad hoc committee to start moving forward with that plan. I don't want to get ahead of Board Member Otte in regards to that. But again, I want my team and I to deliver those things that we're telling you all that we're going to deliver. During the month of August, we'll also talk to you all about our strategic partners in literacy, as well as our pre-K through two around literacy and our pathway to greatness. And we'll bring you our CTE plan in those months. We've tried to front-load all of our contracts, so work session and board meetings should be freed up for us to truly focus on the work, on the real work of moving student achievement in our district. I have a few people that I'd like to introduce, and then this will complete my report. I want to just...
Have a couple.
Do you have a few questions? Okay, I'm sorry.
Board Member McKissick, Board Member Williams, and Board Member Hewitt Garcia.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dr. Richmond. Thank you for the comprehensive reports we received this evening. I'm not sure if these are exactly questions but observations, things to keep in mind as we move forward, as you outlined in the timeline. I would like to see what that timeline looks like and the timeframe sent to us, emailed to all the board members. But I guess just some observations as I hear the really, the big-picture overview. First of all, I was really glad to see how you addressed from birth to second grade. That was really good because we all know that too many times, children are coming into school already behind. And so I'd like to see how we're going to work with community partners for that birth part of it and maybe trying to capture our parents, our young parents, on how to set up their children for success even before. I think too many people think, well, when they get to school, that's when they'll start learning. We all know it starts when they're in utero. So that's just one observation. Next observation is regarding the alignment of the curriculum. And I do understand, and I love the concept of, no matter where a child goes to school, that child can learn, no matter what zip code. But my concern is, is there room in there for the individual creativity of a teacher to be able to expand beyond that and to make sure that teachers know that? Because I think, you know, some will automatically, it's just inherently in them. They get it. They, you know, they can't help themselves. But others are like so afraid of breaking the rules that it might really limit what a child is exposed to while in their classroom. So that is just a concern. I see Dr. Kiner, she's already given me the headline. So my last observation is regarding these really robust goals by 2030, when it's been a challenge historically for this district because of things that are beyond the control of our school district. The intense and immense poverty that our community and our members of our community are having to deal with, and we all know how that impacts when they come into the classroom. So, you know, just, I'm curious to know the benchmarks that are going to happen along the way before we get to year 2030 or even year 2026. I mean, was what, from 28% up to 37%? That's huge. So those are just my observations as I listened to the overview, which was very comprehensive, even in a shortened form. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for those great observations. Again, when we come in August, we wanted to talk about really what you would call cradle to career, our pathways to greatness. It does talk about how to support parents with prenatal support as part of our pre-K through two and working with our strategic partners in literacy. That's why I put those things together so that when we bring them in August, we'll be able to speak to that body of work. The second thing is, of course, if you're an effective teacher, Ms. Kiner talked about a tiered approach to support. That's what we mean, a tiered approach to support. If you're a high-performing principal or a teacher, we're going to let you earn that level of autonomy. But we have a number of permitted teachers, and we know one way of helping them is by doing lesson plans and things like that so that we can take that off of their list of things to do. And last but not least, the team and I talk often about aspirational goals and SMART goals. The reason we have what you would really call these aspirational goals is based on TESA. These milestones have been set for us. So we don't want to go below the milestones that have been set. That's why you hear me talk about, I think, 10% gains are aspirational. But I think in order for us to get to where we have to go by 2030, we have to set both SMART and aspirational goals and to really encourage our students to pour into our teachers with the support, to align our curriculum and our assessments. So again, the things that we're teaching and assessing are better preparing students to do well on the test, but also to get back focused and centered on teaching and learning and quality instruction, which again, is why my team and I want schools ready and prepared to start to deliver instruction day one for our students. So thank you again.
This is all very encouraging. I know we've got other board members, but this is what we have got to hit and nail home as opposed to what the state dictates what we're supposed to report out because, honestly, that all that information as a parent, which is kind of garbly cook. And so I, it was just hard to process, but it's like, okay, a brief mention, but this right here, what you're talking about, this is concrete. This is real. This is tangible and understandable and gives hope as opposed to those random metrics that were put out by the state. So thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Williams?
Thank you, Dr. Kiner. That was a very good presentation. But my concern and my ask is this, of the 300 or so teachers that they are talking about today that we need, how many of those people would be teaching these courses? Do we have classrooms, or did we have classrooms last year that did not have quality instruction in them with the shortage that is at hand? And what could we do to, I guess we're trying to remedy that some kind of a way. But I do know that there were probably some classrooms that went without proper instruction because of the teacher shortage. Of the 300, I think that the news projected today, as we, are today, 300 teachers short. How many of those folk are English and math and science teachers? You know, I'm just curious to know that. Maybe that is where, and some of it is online now, it's instructional other ways. It's not a live person they're teaching maybe. So there may be some impact there. But your presentation was superb, and it's what we need, and I hope they can do it, and the teachers will embrace it and use it because it is up to them to make it happen. If it is in the curriculum and the children are taught, they will survive, they will do well.
Thank you, Board Member Williams, for that question. The team and I are starting to look at the data around the staffing vacancies that we have. They'll tell you today. I set a SMART goal. I'd like for us to have no more than 100 vacancies to start school. I'd like for us to be under 100. And I think if we're under 100 vacancies, this would probably be the first time in, for as long as I can remember, that we've started the school year with less than 100 vacancies. Now, when we get there, I don't know, but that's the charge that I put in place for our HR team as well as our senior-level team in order for us to recruit and start to effectively place and put teachers in place for day one. Now, one other thing that helps us is that last month, we bought, to you all, the online platform in order for us to have those teachers through proximity. So even with proximity, we should be able to have all classes covered day one. And I think where we do have a few openings, just to kind of answer your question, I think is sped and elementary grades. So sped and elementary grades, from the top of my head, is where I know we have some vacancies, and I'm hoping, again, we can get that number down to under 100 teacher vacancies before we start school.
Board Member Hewitt Garcia?
Thank you. My question is around the tiers of support. First, I love, it's easy to understand. If you're doing a good job, you're a veteran teacher, you're knocking it out of the park. We don't want to be up in your classroom every day or a week. Is this the, is this, I'm going to use a term that teachers have reflected to me. Is this the clipboard crew that we're talking about that would come into classrooms about number of visits? Is that the tiers of support? How often you have folks in your classroom?
I'll let Ms. Kiner answer that question.
Well, no, ma'am. It's not the clipboard.
Okay.
No, these are the coaches. We have academic coaches, academic coordinators, who will be deployed to support teachers if they fall into the tier where they are, they need, required. This is side-by-side planning, side-by-side looking at you, deliberately giving you feedback.
This isn't like a fishbowl group of people who come in and make notes and leave?
No, no.
Okay, thank you. The second question was, are the PD requirements tiered to match the level of support that you need? So do you need fewer hours or different types?
Yes.
If you are tier one?
Yes.
Great. And then I want to echo, make a comment, let us a question. And I understand, we have to put the TESA goals up there. But I also want us to be rooted in... to put the TESA goals up there, but I also want us to be rooted in reality. So I think Chief White put something about, here's the difference, right? This should, for me, this time next year, when we're presenting TCAP data, we should have a line that says, here's where we're actually tracking towards. Doesn't mean we change where we aspire to get to, but also know the consequences of that. And then, again, what is an ambitious but feasible target based on the results that we're seeing? So like, keeping in, sort of have a, your budget and then actual, right? I just want us to not lose sight of that, and that this to be a living document that we can reference and continuously improve upon based on what's happening. So thank you for this, and I know we're gonna have far more conversations about it, but I won't prolong our meeting. Thanks.
Let me say this, if anybody can get it done, Dr. Kiner can, because remember, she brought Barack Obama to this city years ago. So I'm sure she can make this change as well. I have every confidence in her to do so.
That's a lovely endorsement, and I think Dr. Richmond is gonna introduce some folks to us, including some new positions.
Yes, Board Member Garcia, are those all of the questions?
Now, Board Member Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Kiner, that was an amazing presentation, and we can now see the goal. We see the goal, we've already established what the goal is going to be, and I don't think anything is impossible. Impossibles don't stand with me. We can make an impossible a possible, and we can make that work. If we continue to work and execute what we have right now, I think that we, no, I'm not gonna say I think, I know that we can strive in excellence and meet that goal. So thank you so much, and that's why we have proximity in place anyway, because if we can't fill them all, we have proximity there just to fill those gaps, but I think that we can do it. So let's execute it and keep it moving, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board Member Porter?
Yeah, just real quick to address our Board Members Williams about the teacher vacancies. I think as we start in the future, have those tough conversations about consolidating schools, closing schools, that will help, you know, the headline as far as the vacancies, because I do agree with you and what Board Member Michelle said about, you know, how can we have to get a teacher autonomy to just really just run free in the classroom? Because the lower-grade teachers, they do seem like they're hit with all the state standards and teaching to the test. So for me, I am tired of hearing those narratives, but just hearing this presentation tonight, I do feel better about going into the school year with a clear focus. So thank you for the presentation. But I just want to say something about, you know, the future conversation we'll have about closing schools.
Thank you, Board Member Porter. I appreciate that comment. As you said, we will be able to maximize on our teacher effectiveness as we right-size the district. But Mr. Langston always reminds us, and I want to remind board members, our staffing formula is more robust than the state formula. So if we didn't staff at the level that we staff, we probably wouldn't have any vacancies. And so I do want the public to know that because of the students we serve, we try to have a more robust staffing formula to lower the teacher-to-pupil ratio. So, so thank you, but I want to continue to add that context to the conversation. I also want to just kind of announce a few people. Next week, we'll announce all of our new appointments. I'll also talk more about regionalization, and I'll bring forward to the board our org chart. But I'd like to just kind of recognize tonight, our new Chief of Staff, Mr. Hannah. Our Chief of Student Support Services, Dr. Broadway. Our Deputy Chief Academic Officer, Ms. Kiner. Regional Superintendent, Dr. Michael Lowe. Regional Superintendent, Ms. Lisha Brooks. And I think those are all of the new appointments. Dr. Malone, did we recognize you last time? If not, Dr. Malone, I'd like to recognize him and Mr. Cedric Smith. Those are our Directors of Operations. Sitting beside Dr. Whitelaw is Ms. Williams, who's sitting in tonight for Ms. Oliver. Ms. Oliver had a death in her family, so Ms. Williams is sitting in for her tonight. Thank you, Ms. Williams. That concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. We are now on to the agenda of staff action items. The first item on the agenda tonight is 9.1 approval, 2025-2026 School Year Agreement to Administer School Nutrition Program.
Yes, Board Chair, it's recommended that Shelby County Board of Education approve the 2025 Agreement to Administer the School Lunch Program for Memphis-Shelby County Schools as required by the School Nutrition Office of Tennessee Department of Education. The approval of this agreement is required to continue reimbursements of breakfast and lunch meal service, including the school breakfast program and the National School Lunch
9.2 Purchase Approve of 806 Technologies, Inc., $125,000.
Yes, Board Chair, it's recommended that Shelby County Board of Education approve a purchase for a one-year contract in the amount of $125,000 with 806 Technology, Inc., for the Title I Crate Web-Based Platform to support the Title I District Charter and Non-Public Schools, as well as neglected and delinquent facilities.
9.3 Purchase Approve of ALSI Elementary School Laptops and Computer Carts, $212,362.
Yes, Board Chair, it's recommended that Shelby County Board of Education approve the purchase to Broadway Typewriter Company, Inc., in the amount of $208,262 for computer hardware, and Unistar Sparkle Computers, Inc., for computer hardware deployment and asset tagging in the amount of $4,100 for ALSI Elementary for the computer devices and deployment of the hardware. The total cost is $212,362.
9.4 Approve of Frontline Technologies Group, LLC, $184,623.8 cents.
Board Chair Coleman, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve the award and contract of Frontline Technologies Group, LLC, in the amount of $184,623.8 cents for renewal of the software maintenance and technical support for the Haynes Asset Management Software. The Memphis-Shelby County Schools Board of Education approved the contract for the Haynes Asset Management Software and Services on June 29, 2021.
9.5 Approve of Curriculum Associates, Incorporated, $2,847,860.
Board Chair, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve the one-year contract and purchase for Curriculum and Associates, Inc., in the amount of $2,847,860 for the purchase of the iReady Assessment and Intervention Tools. The iReady Teacher Toolbox and Online Learning Platform will provide grades K-12 with both the universal screening, assessment, and curricular resources to support intervention instruction aligned Tennessee Department of Education, TDOE, Response to Intervention, and Intervention Framework.
9.6 Approve of YMCA, $215,040.
It is recommended that Shelby County Board of Education approve the contract to the YWCA in the amount of $215,040 for a one-year term. Professional Services for the Enhancement School Capacity to Address Youth Violence Grant for Five High Need Schools. This contract is based on RFP 02072-S25MT, Enhancing the School Capacity to Address Youth Violence.
9.7 Approve of Herbert's STEM Center Classroom Naming Rights.
Board Chair, it's recommended that Shelby County Board of Education approve the following classroom naming rights in consideration for the donation received for the construction of the Whitehaven High School Herbert's STEM Center.
9.8 Approve of KEV Group, Incorporated, $128,553.90.
Board Chair, it's recommended that Memphis-Shelby County School of Education approve the contract to KEV Group, Inc., in the amount of $128,553.90 for the school funds online and school cash online payment software annual renewal to track the overall daily operations of the district's school accounting practices.
9.9 Approve of Lease of Former NW Northwest Prep to Memphis Academy of Science and Engineering, $295,247.
Yes, Board Chair, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve the lease of the former Northwest Prep building to Memphis Academy of Science and Engineer Mace for $295,247 for one year.
9.10 Approve of Power of Words Therapy Services, LLC, $129,000.
Yes, Board Chair, it's recommended that Shelby County Board of Education approve the contract to Power of Words Therapy Services, LLC, in the amount not to exceed $129,000 for the speech screening service for enrolled pre-K students for fiscal year '26 first option renewal. The speech screenings are used as a developmental screening mandate by the federal government to be provided to students.
Board Member Hugh Garcia?
I know we, we just got some news about pre-K. Is this contract, is the scope the same and the amount the same? It says not to exceed, so I'm assuming the only charge is for the students that are screened?
Board Chair Garcia, thank you for that question. We have a number of pre-K contracts on here today. We will review all of them to make, to ensure that they're in line with the number of pre-K and Head Start students that we'll be serving going forward. During our cabinet meeting earlier today, we realized that, and so we didn't want to remove them, but we do know that we need to get with procurement to refine them, to ensure that they're aligned with the possible enrollment that we'll have in pre-K and Head Start. So thank you for...
And then next week, as part of, could we get an update on what the current thinking is, given the news? I know we haven't talked about it publicly, and I know it's, I'm not putting you on the spot tonight, I know we just received that news, but I think, given that a lot of our business and finances are tied to it, I would love for us to have a public conversation next week since we are beginning school soon.
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Garcia. I've spoken with Mrs. Gordon. A number of staff are to meet with the regional team in the morning. There'll be 120-day plan to transition, and so we wanted to wait until next week to update everyone on what their transition will look like over the next 120 days. So we'll be sure to bring you all an update at the Board Business Meeting next Tuesday.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Are also federal, federal in North, giving back to us. Is there not some federal money that comes through to supplement some of this money?
Yes, sir.
Because it's required.
Yes, sir.
9.11 Approve of Raptor Visitor Management System, $138,845.
Yes, Board Chair, it's recommended that Shelby County Board of Education approve a one-year annual renewable contract in the amount of $138,845 for the Raptor Visitor Management System, a cloud-based school safety platform. The system will provide software subscription services to 166 MSCS sites, including four early learning centers, 91 elementary schools, 27 middle schools, 37 high schools, and seven administrative sites.
9.12 Approve of RCM Healthcare Services, $258,475.
Yes, Board Chair, it is recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve the contract to RCM Healthcare Services in the amount not to exceed $258,475 for nursing screening services for up to 5,600 pre-K students for fiscal year '26 first option renewal. The nursing services are mandated by the federal government to be provided to students.
9.13 Approve of Covington Flooring Company, Inc., Ridgeway High School, $272,480.
Yes, Board Chair Coleman, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve the contract with Covington Flooring Company, Inc., in the amount of $272,480 for the Ridgeway High School Gymnasium Floor Replacement Project.
So, Dr. Richmond, the city did not want to help us, or they would not help us with this?
Madam Chair, thanks for that question. I'll defer to Ms. Stewart, but we did speak on this today during cabinet meeting. Ms. Stewart?
Thank you, Superintendent. Chair Coleman, there is, I finally got to the right department, and there's a way that you can file a claim with the city, so I've uploaded all the information and pictures and personal statements and quotes, and then we will, I'm assuming, be reached out to by the city, and I'll keep, keep going after this money.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
9.14 Approve of Sell Former Denver Elementary to Capstone Educational Group, Incorporated, $1,600,000.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education declare surplus and approve the sale of Denver Elementary School property at 1940 Frazier Boulevard, Tennessee, 38127, to Capstone Educational Group, Inc., for $1.6 million.
9.15 Approve of Sell a Former Graves Elementary Land to J&amp;J Investment Properties, $190,000.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education declare surplus and approve the sale of former Graves Elementary vacant land at 3398 Graves Road, Memphis, Tennessee, 38116, to J&amp;J Investment Properties for $190,000.
Approve of Sell Westwood Middle School to Frazier Community Schools, $555,692.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education declare surplus and approve the sale of former Westside Middle School at 3389 Dawn Drive, Memphis, Tennessee, 38127, to Frazier Community Schools for $555,000, $555,692.
And for the listening public, once we sell these buildings, the funds that we collect go into our general account fund?
Yes.
So this is helping us take care of our babies. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
9.17 Approve of School-Based Probation Liaison Program, MOU, $25,000.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve the renewal MOU for the 2025-26 school year for the School-Based Probation Liaison Program in collaboration with Juvenile Court at Memphis-Shelby County Schools. The program has an allocated budget of $25,000 to provide stipends to the recommended liaisons providing services to students on probation.
9.18 Donation Acceptance, Ewan Kessler Shrine School, $85,000.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve a one-time donation from Ewan Kessler, Inc., of a dehumification system for the therapy pool area of Shrine School. The system is valued at $85,000.
9.19 Approve of Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services, Tennessee Prevention Network Renewal Grant Contract, 2025-2026 School Year, $100,000.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve a $100,000 renewal grant with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services for the 2025-26 school year.
9.20 Approve of Tennessee Governmental Grant Contract, $22,339.35.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve the acceptance of the Tennessee Governmental Grant Contract in the amount of $22,339.35.
9.21 Approve of State and Local Cyber Security Grant, $816,000.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve the acceptance of the state and local cybersecurity grant in the amount of $816,000. The grant is for 16,000 CrowdStrike Falcon Complete MDR licenses to be utilized on staff devices and critical systems across the district.
9.22 Approve of Vantage Learning, LLC, $469,695.
Yes, Board Chair, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve a $466,695 amended contract with Vantage Learning, LLC, a web-based writing tool used in all sixth through 10th grade English classes that builds writing skills through prompts, instant scoring, and feedback.
9.23 Approve of Youth Court.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve the MOU renewal request for the 2025 school year for the Youth Court Program in collaboration with Juvenile Court at Memphis-Shelby County Schools. The Youth Court Program allows students opportunity to learn about the justice system by receiving training from attorneys and judges. This program also provides youth offenders with the opportunity to accept responsibility for their actions and to make amends using restorative interventions.
9.24 Approve of Sheffield Elementary School Playground Installation, $20746.56.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve the contract to PlayWorld Systems, Inc., in the amount of $20746.56 for the installation of a playground system at Sheffield Elementary School. of a playground system at Sheffield Elementary School.
We do thank you. 9.25, approval First Amendment to Lester School Sales Agreement.
Yes, it is recommended the board education approve the First Amendment of the purchase-sell agreement with the Capstone Education Group for the Lester School to include updated legal property bounds and limits. No dollar amount.
9.2.
Hold on, hold on. Ms. Stewart?
Yes, that's, the bounds and limits are simply the boundaries. There was a survey done and we needed to update the contract to show the correct property line, that's all it is. No dollar amount.
Okay.
Thank you. 9.26, adoption charter authorization amended round Kirby Middle School.
Yes, Madam Chair, it is recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education adopt the denial of the following charter application for Kirby Middle School.
9.27, adoption charter authorization amended round Dreamcatchers Charter School.
Yes, Madam Chair, it is recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education adopt the denial of the following charter application, Dreamcatchers Charter School.
Board Member Porter.
Yes, the Dreamcatchers Charter School, what exactly do they do? Do they provide additional service that no other charter school provided in the state? Because I was trying to read through the documents and they do have grant money that's coming from the state to authorize events of charter. Just trying to really just, real simple, what is the district's opposition to that? And I know we have all the data, but just something real simple.
Thank you, Board Member Porter. Ms. Parker, would you mind answering that question, please?
Yes, good evening, Dr. Richmond and Board Members, Board Member Porter. So, as far as Dreamcatchers Charter School is concerned, they are proposing a school that is supporting 100% homeless students through a Montessori model for all grade bands K through 12. And so, our district currently has a department that supports our students who are experiencing or are at risk of experiencing homelessness through the McKinney-Vento Act. And so, that is led by Dr. Karen Ball Johnson. And so, with that, our district does have measures in place to support those particular students. As far as the grant is concerned, the school was awarded the CSP grant, which is a startup grant, but that grant is basically around facilities. And so, with that, we acknowledge that they do have preliminary grant money, but there are other components that are missing within this application and this applicant for us to recommend this application for approval.
And so, you guys do go back to them and suggest improvements in what they may have missed on the application and everything, because just overall, it seemed like it's a great opportunity. And I don't, I didn't know that the district does have a department that serves those children in that capacity, but probably just thinking about, do we service enough children in those capacities? Because I do want to continue to build with our community partners, so to say.
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Porter. Ms. Parker, would you share again? I think this is the second, so we did offer feedback. This is the second iteration, and on this round, they still didn't satisfy the rubric, but I'll allow Ms. Parker to add additional context.
Yes, thank you for that, Dr. Richmond. Ms. Timberlake, if you would turn to Slide 21, please. It's in the appendix, more specific. All right. So, as we all know, in order for a school to be recommended for approval, the school has to meet the requirements of the Tennessee Department of Education's scoring rubric. And so, with that, they must meet or exceed in all applicable categories, which will be operations, which will be academics, and additionally, finance. We also have Board Policy 1011 that we layer in after the TDOE rubric. So, in order to even meet Board Policy, you have to have met the TDOE rubric. Unfortunately, this applicant, based on the amended round submission, did not meet those requirements. And so, here is just some more specific information. We did acknowledge, as you see, the strengths in this particular application, that they did receive that grant. We did acknowledge that it is an innovative school model for, you know, the area. So, those are things that we acknowledged as strengths. But when you look at the concern sections, there are just vast concerns around the academic model, there are concerns around being able to support that vulnerable population of students. There are concerns as it relates to meeting state requirements from our foundational literacy in the earlier grades, and then when we shift to the upper grades, because they want a kindergarten all the way through 12th grade model, there are concerns related to the EPSO's and the CTE offerings and all of those opportunities for our high school students. Moving down in the feedback, we know that we want to make sure that our ESL students, our special population students, students with disabilities are definitely taken care of, as there is a clear dedicated plan to provide services for our students with disabilities. As you see in Section 1 in the middle, the concerns, it talks about the McKinney-Vento Act, and there were some key components that were missing in the application that is required by federal law related to the McKinney-Vento Act. And so, those are some things that were missing as well. As we know, charter schools are governed by their own governing board, and so ensuring that they have a governing board that is able to provide the kind of oversight and the guidance that they need to be a successful school to sustain that school model, that is key. And so, the information provided in the application did not give confidence, and we didn't get any additional information in the amended round that we needed in order to ensure that their governing board was going to be able to govern the school to be able to have the school model being the best that it could be. When we look at the operations, we also look at an area. This particular applicant just stated that they wanted to open a school in the city of Memphis. We don't know where in the city of Memphis. We don't know where as far as, you know, where they're wanting to serve, they just said the city of Memphis. And I'll say that typically, this is, we normally identify a region or a neighborhood when we talk about charter schools opening. And so, this particular applicant just cast their net very wide and said the city of Memphis. And as you continue to look down, basically, overall, the application is just severely underdeveloped, and as far as sustainability, we want to make sure that we recommend schools that are going to be successful, schools that are going to be able to thrive. And so, with this, based on the information that we received, our recommendation cannot be approval because it did not meet the TDOE rubric nor Board Policy 1011.
Well, thank you for that, because it just, it seems like, and we can, I don't want to prolong the meeting, but it seems like that we just have a problem with the Montessori curriculum, the way it's being taught. And regardless of where the school is located, like we say, we advocate for children in the district, you know, it, well, it sounded like that's what, it's some of the concerns it was saying about the Montessori model, but thank you for the presentation. I mean, I can talk offline as well, it's all good, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you answered my questions, because I think one of my questions was, where were we going to, where were we going to place those homeless students in another area or another school? So, you did answer my questions, they will be replaced. And given the circumstance, we did give them two opportunities to fix it, and they haven't had that opportunity to fix it, so thank you for clearing it, clearing it up for me.
Yes, ma'am, and I do, would like to remind everyone that there is an opportunity at the appeals level through the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission. So, if denied at the local level, schools in Tennessee do have an opportunity to appeal to the commission for a review as well.
Thank you. Board Member Otai.
Thank you, Board Chair Coleman. My question was actually answer, I'm going to assume that since all the amendments were supposed to be submitted, the deadline is already passed, right? So, let's just say they were to make any changes to improve and get you what you needed or to be in compliance, there wouldn't be enough time to do that between now and the next meeting, correct?
So, through this authorization cycle, this was the last opportunity, but applicants are always able to apply in any upcoming rounds, should they wish to reapply.
Okay, so then no more amendments or adjustments can be made between?
Not at the local level, and then they can appeal to the commission in this round, but they can also apply next year as well if they would like.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
9.28, adoption charter authorization amended round Hillcrest High School.
Yes, Madam Chair, it is recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education adopt the denial of the following charter application, Hillcrest High School.
9.29, adoption charter authorization amended round Still I Rise Academy.
Yes, Madam Chair, it is recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education adopt the denial of the following charter application, Still I Rise.
9.30, adoption charter authorization amended round Kip Cordova Collegiate Elementary.
Yes, Madam Chair, it is recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education adopt the approval of the following charter application, Kip Cordova Collegiate Elementary.
9.31, approval Energy Partners LLC, Riverview Rises, U.S. Department of Energy Grant Project.
Yes, Madam Chair, it is recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education approve the contract to Energy Partners, Integrity Energy Partners LLC, for the design and construction of the energy-efficient upgrades and renovation of Riverview School, majority funded through a grant from the U.S. Department of Energy's Renew America Schools Program in the amount of $10,093,995. The project's name is Riverview Rises.
9.32, approval dual enrollment memorandum of understanding between MSCS and the college partners, Christian Brothers University, Southwest Tennessee Community College, and Tennessee State University, 2025-2026.
Yes, Madam Chair, it is recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding between MSCS and the following college partners for the 2025-26 school year, CBU, three-year agreement, Southwest Tennessee Community College, one-year agreement, TSU, five-year agreement, and Middle College and CBU, three-year agreement.
Board Member Williams.
Is there any reason why we do not have this same affiliation with Lemoine Owen College since we have a school on that campus?
Board Member Williams, thanks for that question. The memorandum of understanding that we have with the school, with the school that's on the campus is a separate memorandum of understanding in regards to the facility. In regards to dual credit or dual enrollment, I'll allow Dr. Taylor to answer that question. Dr. Taylor?
Okay, good evening, thanks for the question. We do currently have a partnership with Lemoine Owen. We have a currently executed MOU with them, and it does not expire until next June 2026.
Any classes at the college?
Yes, they do, through.
So, that's not a relationship with, we have a relationship with Christian Brothers, with the University of Memphis and TSU, and not Lemoine College, and we are on their campus?
Yes, yes, she answered yes, we do.
I'm saying, but why? Since we are there and we are taking courses there, we don't have to pay?
Doctor, she stated that we do have.
It expires this time next year.
We do have an MOU with them.
But they've been there for some time, this is not the first year, it might, it will probably be renewed. My concern is why not have one there?
We have one.
That we pay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
It expires next June. These, these are renewals, Board Member Williams, these are renewals. What has happened is.
So, theirs is expiring this year?
Yes, theirs is on a different cycle from these.
So, are you telling me that we already committed something forward to Lemoine College?
Yes, sir.
What amount?
I would, I know, again, there's a facilities MOU that Ms. Stewart may know the cost of, you don't know it off the top of your head, and then there's the MOU that we have in regards to dual credit and dual enrollment. Do you know the amount?
We spent about $175,000 last year in tuition fees with Lemoine.
Board Member Williams, she said we spent about $175,000 last year.
We paid.
Yes, sir.
We paid that to the college, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Very good, I think you should continue.
Yes, sir.
Board Member McKissick.
Thank you. I think I almost forgot what I was going to say, but to piggyback on Mr. Williams, I had the pleasure at the end of the last school year of spending a day with Lemoine and at their middle college, high school there, and it's, they're really doing some great things. I know there's some ideas percolating with the new president at Lemoine and wanting to further bolster the relationship with MSCS, so I look forward to being a part of the conversation since that school is in the district that I currently represent. My question was, you made me lose my train of thought, Mr. Williams. Oh, it was just a clerical update, it's just what you were saying is not exactly matching what we are seeing on here regarding the TSU. I don't, I don't see that level of detail mentioning those, it's just to make sure that it's aligned with whatever is posted publicly and what you're saying verbally.
Yes.
Former student of mine.
Well, there you go, we knew he was awesome.
You knew you was on it for some reason.
Thank you.
Board Member McKissick, can you, Board Member McKissick, can you just add a little more context in regards to what doesn't match?
It just, I think you mentioned like CBU and three-year agreement, but it has five-year agreement here and things of that, just a little clerical, technical.
I got you.
Just to clean it up.
Yes, ma'am.
So that next week we have exactly.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, I guess the, the summary that we have is a little bit different from what was provided, but that's okay. No, I'm excited about all of this.
Thank you, we'll clean it up. Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Yes, sir.
9.33, approval local dual, local dual credit memorandum of understanding between MSCS and college partners, Christian Brothers University and Southwest Tennessee Community College.
Yes, Madam Chair, it is recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding between MSCS and the following college partners for local dual credit courses, Christian Brothers University, five-year agreement, and Southwest Tennessee Community College, STCC, one-year agreement.
9.34, approval Code for Kids, $162,755.10.
Yes, Madam Chair, it is recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education approve the one-year contract with Code for Kids for $162,755.10.
We're now on to Board.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Board Member McKissick.
Thank you, I just wanted to, I'm curious about Code for Kids, can you tell me a little bit more about that? I think it's exciting.
Yes, thank you, Board Member McKissick. Dr. White Law, would you add context for Code for Kids?
Thank you, Dr. Richmond, to the board members, we're excited about the work as well. Code for Kids will be working with all of our middle schools in helping to get their programs off the ground, working with cohorts of students and teachers. And so, we've decided instead of doing all of our students, but setting up cohorts in each middle school so that they can get started with the work.
And learning how to code?
Yes, so we can expand it.
And this is happening at all middle schools?
All middle schools with a cohort of students.
Right, no, actually, collaboration is good in terms of working and learning. Thank you, this is great, thank you.
And they'll be working also with our CCTE department, so we'll be expanding it.
Board Member Porter.
Yeah, I'm excited as well, but Code for Kids, did that, did this go out for bid?
I'll let, TDOE did not go out for bid, but I think also, but we do have a state contract.
So, this is a piggyback contract?
Yes.
Okay.
We are now on to board items. 10.1, proposed policies first reading.
We have several policies that we discussed during the committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. The first one is 0000, School Board Meetings clarifies that the board chair can schedule special call meetings when deemed necessary or when requested by the majority of the board to do so. Additionally, the draft at Language moves spotlight on the arts and special recognition to the board business meeting agenda. The next policy, 0002, Board Members Qualification and Election, it adds length. 0002, Board Members Qualification and Election, it adds language for required orientation and ongoing development for all board members. Policy number 0004, Board Officers and Duties, it clarifies that if the chair office is vacated, the vice chair will assume the chair's duties until a new chair is elected. Policy number 0005, Method of Election of Board Officers, it requires the election of board officers to occur at a business or special call meeting in September, except when county elections are held. During that time, the election for the board officers will occur after the newly elected members have been sworn in. Policy number 0012, Board Policy Development, Adoption, Dissemination, and Review, it's just cleanup language that includes the board district general counsel as a responsible party. Policy number 0016, Orientation for School Board Candidate, Proposed Revisions Make the Policy Applicable to Board Members and Not School Board Candidates. It also provides general provisions regarding responsible PD expenses and requires prior approval from the board chair for district paid expenses with exceptions for the annual TSBA conference, the TSBA Fall District Meeting, and one annually required TSBA School Board Training Meeting. The next policy 0017, Board Conference Travel, we're requesting that this policy be repealed and the language, because the language was incorporated in the previous policy 10016. The next item 0025, Constituent Services, again, this is just cleanup of this particular bill, of this particular policy, and we've included the board district general counsel as a responsible party. The next item 5024, Student Suicide Prevention, this is a statutorily required policy that provides a framework for student suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention, including but not limited to training for staff and resources for parents and students, equitable access to district mental health services, as well as having a coordinated district crisis response team available to provide timely support after a suicide incident. All of those above policies were discussed in committee. The next policy was not, but we did inform you all that if we were able to complete the policy review, internal review in time, that we would be bringing it before the board for consideration. So moving on to policy number 6024, Cell Phone Personal Communication Devices, and in your document, it starts on red page 32. And I will wait until we can move to red page 32, because the listening audience has not had an opportunity to hear nor see this particular item. So again, the revisions starting on red page 32 are aligned with recently enacted law prohibiting students from using wireless communication devices during the instructional period. Our proposed revision covers the entire school day. Under the policy, students are generally prohibited from using or possessing these devices during the school day with exceptions for permitted use, including teacher authorization for educational purposes, for documented health conditions, and an example of that would be like a child who needs to use their phone to check their glucose level. Also is outlined in the student's IP 504 plan or an ILP when used as an assistive technology device, and we've also included language that says other cases as approved by the superintendent or designated. The first four items were outlined in law, the last one, other cases as approved by the superintendent, that's language that the district is proposing to include. Also, unless an exception applies, the policy requires devices to be powered off and stored out of sight in designated locations, such as lockers, backpacks, and secure school locations. Violations of the policy may result in confiscation of the device and disciplinary measures aligned with the district's student code of conduct. Before we move on to the admin rules and regs, I just want to mention that we did receive recommendations for slight revisions from two of the board commissioners. Commissioner McKissick recommended that we include smartwatches under the definition section, so the law outlines what a wireless communication device includes, and it would be things like cell phones, tablets, computers, laptops, and gaming devices, but Commissioner McKissick is recommending that we also include smartwatches. Also, Commissioner Porter suggested revising the language on page 33 about the appropriate storage locations. Again, that's on red page 33 where we say individual locked pouches. He's recommending that we use the term individual secure pouches just to keep the policy vendor neutral. Additionally, Commissioner Garcia recommended that we begin tracking data regarding the effectiveness of any imposed consequences for noncompliance. As we move to the admin rules and regs on red page 35, we've outlined a progressive disciplinary approach for any violations of the policy. When we present the policy next week at the board business meeting, we will be asking for you to suspend the rules and approve the policy on first reading, just in order for us to have the policy in place for the beginning of the school year. Any questions or concerns?
Board Member Hugh Garcia?
Thank you. We have to, we have to change our policy to follow the law, so my comments are not saying that we shouldn't do that. My, I really do not like the consequences for infractions. I think it's devoid of personal circumstances for students of that. I think it's very different if you are a high school senior and your mother's texting you to pick up your elementary sister, or you're scrolling on TikTok during AP history, right? Those are two different things that I would have a cellphone out for. I think our, a lot of our students, particularly high school students, have adult responsibilities. Many of them have jobs. So I'm uncomfortable with the consequences, but the board owns policy. And so when I, the data comment that Ms. Stewart referenced is, I want to know what, what is the problem we're trying to solve by having these consequences? What will be better in schools by having these consequences available to principals? And I know principals have said they want this, but I'm glad that we got their input. But I do think it is ripe for exceptions and like not being implemented with fidelity and having different experiences by schools. Well, I didn't, my teacher just told me to put it in my locker. What are we trying to solve by, consequences for infractions are not required by the state. That is something we are inserting into the policy. So what's going to improve by doing this? I have a hard time getting to, if, we can escalate it to suspension of multiple days for what is ultimately insubordination or multiple violations of a policy, but if, are the consequences greater than what the disruption was? If I was on my phone for 10 minutes during the school day, but then I'm going to tell you you're going to be out of school for three days, what's the, what's the greater learning loss? So I just want to know, what are we measuring to say it's going to get better as a result of these consequences for infractions? I would propose at semester, we get a report on number of incidences, the things that we do track with our security team, our principals track, to know, is this, is this helpful? Because we have the opportunity to revise the consequences section.
And I do want to mention that the confiscation language, as well as the disciplinary consequences, are in our current policy, but I do hear we've had a lengthy conversation around your concern, and I think it's a very valid concern. But I do want to mention that those consequences are already allowed under our current policy. I also want to mention that if you have a child who has repeat infractions, that we're not necessarily suspending for the child using or being in unauthorized possession of the cellphone, it would be moved up in terms of our student code of conduct, in terms of insubordination or continuous engagement in a particular behavior that we've already addressed with the child.
Board Member McKissick?
I have to say something now that Ms. Stewart has put me on blast about smartwatches. I'm going to get it to my daughter when I get home. But the reason why I wanted to mention that is because I wanted to eradicate confusion for administrative staff at schools, because if there's like a little wiggle room, kids are going to take it. And so, and if we don't have it, you know, specifically outlined, I just don't want it to be confusing for parents, for students, if we say, well, you didn't mention about a smartwatch, an iPhone watch, or whatever they're called. And so I don't even wear one. But that was, that was my concern, not just trying to be like a little negative Nellie about it, but just to make sure that everyone is protected. And perhaps to address Board Member Garcia's concerns at the start of the school year, because this is going to be a big fat deal, you know? And so I'm wondering how the fallout happened when that text message went out yesterday. But to speak at it saying, here are positive ways to use your phone, wait until after the school day to check if you're working a job, I mean, you know, that's when you whip it out. And just finally have to say, it was incredibly ironic that Mr. Williams' cellphone went off as you were going over the policy. So thank you for that moment of humor.
Board Member Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Garcia's point and Commissioner McKissick's point, that's going to be, we spoke about this earlier, that's going to be hard for those kids to come in there without a phone. But for the sake of starting school on time with these policies in place, like she said, we can go back and hash it out, but when, before, so school can start, we'll have the policy in place, and then we can work through that afterwards. So thank you.
Board Member Garcia?
I have an unrelated policy question, so I'll let anybody who has cellphone questions go first, but hit me last. Okay. Well, I've got you at the mic, Ms. Stewart. One thing I want to follow up on is we, you worked with us to put, to pass a resolution on teacher bonuses. I've seen some chatter about where my money. Do you have any information about the teacher bonuses that were coming from the state and as, when we, we did a resolution in support of the providing those?
We did submit the resolution to the state, but I will have to defer to Chief Langston to speak on that issue.
Board Member Garcia? Ironically, today, Mr. Langston, we have worked with communications, we've drafted communications to send out to teachers. I think we received notice Monday, yesterday, Mr. Langs, yeah, we- Yeah, Monday. Yesterday, we, we received notice on yesterday, and I think we've said that they should see it on their next check. But we'll be sending out information to teachers as early as, are we putting it in the weekly communications, Wednesday or Thursday? Okay. $2,000.
Okay, we, we're going to deliver some good news then. So you'll know in the next 48, 72 hours, the official timeline, which you will receive that $2,000 bonus. So all our teachers, I hope that's the headline. Money's coming. Thanks.
You want to share something, Mr. Langston? You want to share something?
Thank you, Dr. Richmond. I do want to, I was trying to get away with our speaking tonight, but I do want to, because we've been getting a lot of social media, people have been saying that we have the money. We actually do not have the money in our bank account. So my morning routine for the past two weeks has been asking the team if we've received the money in our bank account. We're expected to receive it by the end of the week, which is why the advisory says that we'll pay it next pay period. So there's a lot of people online saying, y'all received the money that the state told us. It's not true. We haven't received the money. But we are expected to receive it by the end of the week, and we have planned, we have the file in place to pay it next pay period, provided that the state goes through and funds enter our account by the end of the week.
As long as they get their money.
When we get our deposit, you get yours. Thank you.
Board Member McKissick?
Thank you.
Chair, thank you. Dr. Richmond, just, I'm getting texts as I'm sitting here, you know, violating a phone policy. But there really is a serious concern from principals because the greater majority are going to violate, are at risk of violating this. These are i-babies. They literally were born with phones in their hands. And so we need to have some sort of stopgap or grace or something, because it's coming. It is coming. And I'm sure across the state, so I don't know what, you know, the best practices of superintendents from other districts across the state, or how they're going to address this. But this is potentially going to be a very contentious problem from students to parents, all of it. So I'm just saying, I don't know, I don't have the answer, but I'm getting text messages from principals saying it's coming. It's going to be a problem, a big problem.
Yes, Board Member McKissick, thank you for that. Was different, policies and statutes are different. And so the devil is always in the detail when it comes to a policy, and the people, the grassroots people are the people who have to implement it. And so we're charged with implementing it, but I will ask my team as well as principals to review the policy, to try to always act with common sense and with, again, student best interests in mind. We will go back and just kind of review data around cell phones since we've had a policy in place for a number of years. We will do that. We've started to implement a communications plan around it because we anticipate some issues and some concerns. And so we'll, we'll listen to what you, as well as Board Member Garcia, said about continuing to evaluate the data. We don't want to overly suspend students. And so we're going to do everything we can to use what you would call progressive discipline before suspending students. But again, we do want to be in compliance with what's now not just a policy, but a statute.
Thank you. I certainly hope at the state level that they're being just as mindful to monitor what's happening, not only here, but at school districts all across the state of Tennessee. Thank you.
Board Member Williams? Board Member Otay? Board Member Murphy?
The concern that I was, that I had, I'm asking about, it's, in this document, Article 9.7, and it is the STEM Academy that is being, extension that is being done at Whitehaven High School. And there are some concerns that have come up around that facility because they came last week and wanted to cut, cut back on some construction. So we asked what was in the contract, and he said that didn't matter. It does matter. Because if we paid you one for one thing and you're doing something else, we need to know that. So I want you to look at it. Tito was there, I think, he hasn't understood it. But what the guy said who came is that they want to cut the, cut the building. They're going to eliminate so many rooms. I said, well, what about the cost? He said, well, you still got to oversee. Ah, but that doesn't make sense, because we have a contract, and it says how much space we get and how much we pay. So I just want to make sure that you are aware of that, and you can look into it. If they're going to follow the contract, fine. But if they're going to cut space, they need to cut the money.
Thank you, Board Member Williams. Mr. Langston and I, we'll, we'll plan to go out there, I'm planning to go out there to take a look at it. So, so thank you. We'll look into it.
Board Chairman Coleman, if I may, we're, I thought we were going to stick to the cell phones. Did you have a cellphone?
Mine's a cellphone.
Go ahead, and then I'll go after you.
Now, I have, I have a question or a suggestion, and maybe it'll minimize the kids going crazy over not having their cell phones. If we, if they could have cellphone cubbies, they can take their cell phones, and the classroom will turn them off, and they'll be in their cubbies. And then when they leave the class, they can pick their phones back up. Now, that will help. It's not secure, but we have to come up with something, because I seen a video the other day, I saw a video the other day, and they took the child's phone, and he broke everything in the house. So we don't have to figure this out. TVs, couches, the dog, everything. So I'm saying, we got to do something. We can't just take these kids' phone like that.
Yeah, we can.
We can, but it's not going to turn out pretty.
What you all are failing to understand, this is not a Memphis Shelby County schools. This is state.
I understand we have to follow policy. I understand we have to follow the law, but the kids, they're not looking at that. We have to figure out something, or it's going to be chaos when school starts. or it's going to be chaos when school starts.
And I would like to point out that in the policy, we're not necessarily saying that the, that the child cannot keep their cellphone. It may look different at some schools. In the policy, we do state that the, the child cannot use or be in unauthorized possession of the, of the phone. So if at school A, the child may be allowed to keep the phone in the backpack, purse, pocket, as long as it's turned off and they're not using it. At another school that may have a high incident of infractions, that particular principal may say, well, no, you need to keep your cellphone in a locker. Or we will have these secured pouches for you to keep your cellphone in. So it may look different at some schools depending on, you know, the, the school itself. But we're not saying in policy that the child cannot have their phone. They just by law cannot use their phone during the instructional period unless those exceptions are met.
That's the entire school day, correct?
The entire school day.
Unless there's some exception. Go ahead.
Thank you, Board Chair. This is the last question. Sure, everybody's ready for the meeting to be adjourned. I did want to add to the cellphone. I think we should give the schools the ability. Might I suggest the autonomy to deal with the cell phones, how they see fit, the principals, how they see fit based on the climate of the school. But I just, did just get a message regarding the, the money. I was asked, can we please clarify what they mean by the next pay period? So we have a date. What do we mean by the next pay period? This is the question. August 1st, okay. August 1st, the money will be there, minus taxes. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Our board allocations, I'm asking all board members, if you have allocations that you want for this month, turn it in before 4 o'clock on Friday to Karen. Before 4 o'clock on Friday to Karen. Or they won't be on this month. There'll be next month's allocation. There'll be no further business. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening. Thank you.